Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Tempe City Council regular council meeting agenda. Sorry we're a little bit late. We're finishing up an executive session upstairs. Item number one is called order. Members of the public may attend the meeting virtually through Cisco WebEx by visiting tempe.gov/councilmeetinginfo for more information. Council meetings can also be watched in real time via Cox Cable Channel 11 and at tempe.gov/tempe11. Would now like to invite everyone who's able and willing to stand to join me in a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Next, we'll move to item number four, which is meeting minutes. I'll be assisted this evening by Vice Mayor Adams. But Vice Mayor Adams is going to start with our Native American land acknowledgement statement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We wish to acknowledge that Tempe is the homeland of the Native American people who have inhabited this landscape since time. These ancestral lands of the Odam Thumb, known as Pima, and our Peepash, known as the Maricopa, and their ancestors exceed far beyond our city. This land continues to be spiritually connected to the Aa Thumb of the Salt River, Pima, Maricopa Indian Community, and Hila River Indian Community. We accept the responsibility of stewarding those places and solemnly pledge to consider this commitment in every action.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Adams. We're going to move on next to item 4A, which is the approval of city council meeting minutes.
Yes, I propose that we approve items A1 through A3.
It's been moved by Vice Mayor Adams for the approval of 4A1 through 4A3. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Keating. Please vote.
Aye.
Councilmember Hodge?
Aye.
And that item passes seven to zero. Next up is item 4B, acceptance of board commission committee and committee meeting minutes. Vice Mayor Adams.
Yes, I make a motion to approve 4B1 through 4B9.
It's been moved by Vice Mayor Adams and seconded by Councilmember Keating. Please vote.
Aye.
And that item also passes seven to zero. That brings us to item number five, reports and announcements. First up, item 5A1, and I have a presentation of a citizen award of merit, and I'm going to come down here to the front if a council wants to join me. I'd also like to see if I could get our chief and his team to come join me down here as well. And I'd also see if we have folks here from Tempe St. Luke's this evening. So this is the Tempe Fire Medical Rescue Department Citizen Award of Merit. The award goes to Riley Flippo, a 17-year-old Tempe High School student, received CCR training at Tempe High School last semester that was taught by a member of the Tempe Fire Medical Rescue Department and Tempe St. Luke's Hospital. On Sunday, May 7th, just weeks after receiving the training, Riley put his recently learned knowledge to use when he administered CCR to a teen girl who was found underwater at a pool and who would drown. Thanks to Riley's swift efforts, the girl was breathing again when TFMR arrived. The patient has a good prognosis, thanks in part to the actions Riley took on this day. The City of Tempe and Tempe Fire Medical Rescue Department would like to present Riley Flippo with the Citizen Award of Merit and recognition of his life-saving actions on May 7th, 2023. I was going to say really quickly before we go here, it can get a little crowded down here sometimes. I wanted to bring up Councilmember Devaro too, but I also wanted to thank Councilmember Devaro and his leadership for seeing the opportunity over 11 years ago to train people in our high schools with life-saving skills. The compressions-only training program has given thousands of young people in our community the knowledge and confidence to provide life-saving support in need until paramedics have the opportunity to arrive. So I wanted to thank once again Councilmember Devaro, Tempe Fire Medical Rescue, and our great partner, Tempe St. Luke's Hospital, and of course, my good friend Sheila Bryant. No, you did not pay me to say that. I have been at Tempe St. Luke's, and she has personally taken care of me. So I just want to thank each and every one of them for their commitment to making Tempe a community filled with heart to help others. And with that, I wanted to bring up Councilmember Devaro.
Yeah, Mayor, and thank you. And Sheila, I mean, you and staff and everybody keeping this thing going, I mean, honestly, with coordination with you and Tempe Fire. But I want to say the story started, it had to have been 12, 14 years ago, I was at a conference for National Lead to Good Cities, and I was talking to another council member who happened to be a doctor that was, hey, I'm trying to start this program within our city, working with the high schools, trying to teach them CCR. And I was like, hey, we're just starting, you know, learning this as in the fire department. Yeah, I'm having problems trying to get, you know, the council to support this, the schools to support this. I go, I'm going to do that in Tempe. And it was with the help of me and then Councilmember Ordondo at the time, we got this program together. I remember the first time we did it, we did a Tempe High, we did a big auditorium, you know, bring the classes in, just learn how to do it. And we said, we need to do this every year though, but we can't do it like this, we've got to do it in the classes. And you guys have taken this program by far and made it into a tremendous success. In my opinion, you're the second student or third student that has done this, and it's just been outstanding because this is just one piece of the puzzle. And what you guys have done all together collectively, and just this conversation I had at a conference, this is why this program's doing it. So thank you for being part of this.
Thank you so much. That's going to move us to item number 5B, city managers' reports and announcements. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Tonight, I'm very excited to have staff provide you a PlayMobil update. Come on down, staff. And by staff, I mean these fine people who are coming down, who will introduce themselves by name here momentarily.
Oh, yeah.
We're so excited to be here, we forgot to get the clicker.
And this was my job, ma'am.
So, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm Denise Rentschler, Senior Recreation Coordinator.
And I'm Callie Duplessis, Assistant Recreation Coordinator.
And we are in the Community Engagement Office within the Community Services Department. We're super excited, well, and together we oversee the PlayMobil. We're so excited that I forgot to tell you that, but together we oversee the PlayMobil. And we are honored and excited to be here tonight to provide you with an update. Specifically, we are going to review why the PlayMobil came to be, what we've achieved, how the program looks today, and where we're headed. The PlayMobil was designed to engage with teens and tweens that were not participating in organized after-school activities. While Tempe has great participation in activities and classes, as well as enrollment in before and after-school programs with a K through 5th grade audience, we noticed a significant decline in involvement with the middle school students, especially in after-school programs, leaving them unsupervised after school. National statistics show that there is an increase in negative juvenile behavior weekdays between 3:00 and 7:00 p.m. That is when a child is more likely to commit a crime, become a victim of a crime, or experiment with risky behavior. So we created the PlayMobil to address the gap in service with middle school students. By activating neighborhood parks near schools with free recreational programming, we eliminate the barriers like transportation and cost that prevent youth from participating in programs. The PlayMobil provides equitable play opportunities for all. We were fortunate that council believed in the PlayMobil idea and awarded us a $67,500 Innovation Fund grant in 2018. We worked with Fleet to acquire a 2002 vehicle that was set to be retired, and we hit the roads in January of 2019 with lofty goals. We wanted to engage with 3,000 youth and receive a 90% satisfaction rating. So we started with a ton of outreach. We went to all of the middle schools, we were there for recess, assemblies, even gym class. We visited multiple park locations, and we realized that tweens and teens were challenging to reach. The younger elementary school students were much easier to connect with, and surprisingly, many of them too were going home alone. So we were learning a lot and on our way to achieving our goals when our pilot program was stopped short due to COVID. Participants went on spring break, and they did not return to school for nearly 18 months. So during this time, we reviewed the results from the PlayMobil pilot program, we identified our successful parks, the best days for our visits, we refined our outreach strategies, we added more activities, and when the kids returned to school, we relaunched the PlayMobil for Phase 2. We knew that the need for free recreational programming would be even greater now. Youth had been cooped up indoors, inactive and isolated, and families were now experiencing the financial impacts of COVID. We received a very warm welcome when we returned to the parks, with many people asking, where have you been? The youth that we had built relationships with during our pilot program had become ambassadors for the PlayMobil. They told their classmates and their friends all about us, and they brought them over to play. Thanks to council and staff's continued support, fiscal year 2023 budget supplemental was approved, and this past school year was made possible with the permanent funding of the PlayMobil. We now have a dedicated Assistant Recreation Coordinator who manages the daily operations of the PlayMobil, along with an amazing team that are enthusiastic, empathetic, and resourceful. Our after-school program currently runs three days a week for 29 weeks out of the school year. We visit Scudder Park on Mondays to target the fees middle school students, JC Park on Thursdays, targeting the Mosley students, and on Wednesdays, we alternate between Sulla and Hollis so that we can reach the Connolly Middle School students. And just this past month, we added an eight-week summer program that takes place indoors and at Tempe Pools. So what have we done in this timeframe? Well, since January of 2019, the PlayMobil has activated Tempe Parks 275 times. We have engaged more than 7,000 youth in activities, and all were highly satisfied. Just this year alone, we have actively participated in more than 30 city, community, and school events, reaching an estimated 35,000 people. We believe that consistency and quality are the keys to the success of the PlayMobil program. We offer a consistent schedule that is promoted in the parks and online. We visit the same park on the same day every week with the same amazing staff. We provide quality programming that includes sports, arts and crafts, literacy activities, and we even have a chill zone for those wanting a little less. We host amazing special events that our participants get to help plan. The PlayMobil has evolved from a program where kids dropped in just for a little bit to play, to now we are literally having to send them home because the PlayMobil has ended. And we even have parents asking if they can rent us for birthday parties.
Now, there are so many stories that we want to share with you. We could tell you all about the adaptive recreation lead participants coming over for their monthly field trip to the PlayMobil, or I could tell you about that one kid who isn't necessarily picked first to be on everybody's team, but made that game-winning catch and seeing all of his friends and participants running over and picking him up and him screaming at the top of his lungs, this is the best day of my life! But I want to tell you about Joey. Now Joey was really struggling through middle school. He was consistently getting in trouble, acting out, and had just been kicked out of school for fighting. He started hanging around JC Park, started participating in the PlayMobil on a weekly basis, started following the rules and really becoming really successful. He even found out about our stop over at Scudder on Mondays and started riding his scooter from University and Hardy all the way over to Lake Shore and Watson, just so he could participate with the PlayMobil twice a week. Now, I'm happy to report that Joey had a really successful end of his school year and just promoted to the 9th grade. He is now interested in volunteering for the city of Tempe and hopes to one day join our PlayMobil team. These are just a few snapshots of the impact that the PlayMobil is making on a day-to-day basis. The PlayMobil is our Tempe values in motion. Didn't forget. The PlayMobil is both a program and an outreach tool that helps with the achievement of council priorities. The PlayMobil really targets underserved communities throughout Tempe so that they too can experience quality programming. Our awesome team members provide information on city programs and services and act as mentors and positive role models. And by activating Tempe Parks on a consistent schedule, the PlayMobil really provides that crucial feeling of safety. Dang it. I knew I was going to do it.
You got it. We didn't practice who was doing the flipping, so we apologize for that. But now you're probably asking, what's next? Well, we are always looking for new and exciting experiences to keep the PlayMobil fresh and relevant with our middle school students. We talk to our participants on a regular basis so that we understand why they choose to come play with us. With the temperatures on the rise, we've taken the PlayMobil program indoors and to Tempe's Pools. Our free eight-week summer program includes Make It Mondays at the Cahill Senior Center, where we will be featuring STEM activities, Athletic Thursdays at the Kiwanis Recreation Center Gym with sports and games, and our Float In Friday is going to alternate between the Kiwanis Wave Pool and the Escalante Outdoor Pool every Friday. This summer may be the first time that some of our PlayMobil participants get to visit the wave pool, and we couldn't have done this without our awesome aquatics team. By teaming up with other work groups, we are able to maximize our budget and increase our impact. We're partnering with the Tempe Public Library to ensure that our participants have their own library card and that they know about online resources, as well as a summer reading program. The Friends of the Tempe Public Library recently awarded us a grant for our own little library, and they are filling it with books from our participants' wish list. We've also applied for other grants to help make our mobile Makerspace STEM Lab a reality. Five years ago, when we pitched this idea, we set out to engage with teens and tweens that were not participating in organized after-school activities. By creating fun, safe, social environments that are bursting with activity, we are doing this. And while we made a positive impact in our participants' lives, we realized that they will eventually age out of our program. That's why it is vital that we offer other like-minded programs and opportunities, including the Youth Volunteer Program, Teen Library Activities, MIAC, Youth Employment Opportunities, College Connect, and more, to these youths so that they stay active and engaged as they grow up to become great community members.
So buckle up, and we're going to take you on a ride through the PlayMobil of this year.
We appreciate your time this evening, and we look forward to seeing you in the parks.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate the presentation. Vice Mayor Adams?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the wonderful presentation. I've had the opportunity to go to the PlayMobil, and it's so much fun. Tell me, you have a different van now.
Mayor and Council, Vice Mayor Adams, we actually, when we had our budget supplemental approved, we did get approved for a van, and we're waiting for it. So we are still driving. Our good old girl, no, she's great, she's got less than 40,000 miles on her, and we are just waiting for our new van to come in. So we're just waiting patiently.
Okay, good, because, yes, I mean, I know that it was really old and...
But she's doing great.
She's doing good, okay.
Kids love her, they don't know.
Very good. And you know, Denise, particularly, I've known you for so long, and you're just such a great employee. The city is really lucky to have you, and it sounds like you too, but I just really appreciate all your hard work, and you literally put this all together, and I'm just really proud of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Adams. It definitely is a team effort. I have an amazing team with Callie and Community Services, and this wouldn't happen without a lot of people that you don't see here right now. So on behalf of all of them, thank you very much, I appreciate that.
You're welcome. Please send congratulations to the rest of the team also.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Garal?
I was going to say, I've been out there and saw what you guys are able to do. I love the energy of the volunteers, of the people that are working there. I love your energy, and if you are feeding that to the kids, our kids in Tempe are really lucky. Thank you so much. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Devaro?
Just real quick, yeah, your energy is great, all of you guys, I mean, honestly. But the program itself, just doing this after school is tremendous, just to get the kids out there and doing something. And I love the success stories that come out of that stuff, so keep it up.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for the comments, questions?
I do.
Oh, Councilmember Hodge?
Yes, as I said, as my colleague said, it's a phenomenal program. My question is, I heard you said you're getting a new bus. Are you planning on trying to expand it to having it two different parks at the same time if you have the two buses? Or are you going to continue just to have it at the one park each time?
Councilmember, I'm sorry, Mayor Councilmember and Councilmember Hodge, we definitely are looking at opportunities to, you know, again, like we said, stay relevant. We would be looking at securing additional funding for a second vehicle, but those are all things that we're going to be looking at as we move forward in this upcoming year.
Thank you so much, and you please let me know how I can help in any way possible with the school districts and helping with that too. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? All right, sounds good. Thank you so much, good job, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I brought it back.
All right, I'll move back. Mr. City Manager, any other announcements?
Nope, that's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. All right, next up here, tonight's agenda has a number of items that the city council must consider in order to continue to conduct council business. Guidelines for conduct at city council meetings are available on the table near the entrance for those in attendance at tonight's meeting. I'll now read the protocol for ensuring the proper conduct of city council meetings. Continued disruptive behavior will lead to removal from the council chambers. We need to make sure that we can hear everyone in the room. Behavior that disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of any council meeting is not helpful, it is not permitted. This includes behavior both inside and outside of the council chambers. Should individuals inside the chambers become disruptive so that city business is not able to be conducted, I will first ask that the individuals allow city business to be completed. There will be a time for public comment during the call to the audience portion of the meeting. If no cooperation, I will issue a verbal warning and let them know that continued disruptive behavior will lead to removal from the chambers. If no cooperation still, I will issue a second verbal warning and let them know that continued disruptive behavior will lead to removal from the council chambers. If no cooperation, then I will ask security officers to remove only those individuals who are causing the disruption. Security personnel should not engage in any way but only to escort them out of the chambers. If individuals refuse to leave, security personnel shall warn them that they are trespassing and that the next step will be arrest by a Tempe police officer. Tempe police officers may have to arrest if individuals refuse to leave. Charges for trespass and disorderly conduct may apply, as well as other charges. Should anyone be asked to be removed from the meeting, I will recess the meeting. Which brings us to item number six, public appearances. According to the Arizona Open Meeting Law, the city council may only discuss matters listed elsewhere on this agenda for discussion and legal action. The purpose of the open call to the public is to allow individuals to address the city council on any issue within the jurisdiction of the city council. No person shall speak more than once, and there is a limit of three minutes per speaker. Speakers present at the podium must state their name and their city of residence and provide a speaker card. Members of the public shall refrain from making personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks and from becoming boisterous while addressing the city council or while attending the meeting. Speakers will be taken first come, first served, in the order in which the cards are received. Speakers' visual aids and appearances by phone or recordings are not allowed. Council members are prohibited by state law from taking action on, commenting, or discussing a matter raised by a member of the public, even if asked to do so by a member of the public, so long as the subject discussed by the speaker is not listed as a specific agenda item for council's consideration for discussion and legal action. At the conclusion of public appearances, the council may ask the city manager to review a matter or place a matter on a future agenda. That will now bring me to the cards, and I will take these out in the order in which I receive them. The first speaker I have this evening is Robert Nichols. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence, you have three minutes.
Thank you all very much for your time. My name is Robert Nichols. I live in Tempe, have for the last 20 years, and pronouns are he/him. I'm a former Arch and Culture Commissioner, and I am here because I'm a lifelong, long-suffering Arizona sports fan. When I was a child, I saw the Diamondbacks win the World Series, I was amazed by Steve Nash and his MVPs. I even have a cousin who worked for the Coyotes. I get a lot of joy from watching Arizona sports teams succeed, both on the court and in our communities. So when I first heard about propositions 301, 302, 303, I was very excited, but skeptical as someone who's worked in government before on some smaller level. It just felt a little too good to be true, so I got myself informed, and what I found was surprising. Found over $200 million in infrastructure costs to be paid by Tempe taxpayers, 30 years of tax abatements for a casino magnate, with a history of missing tax payments, more than a million gallons of water every day for the proposed arena, and since the rejection of 301, 302, and 303, a minority owner of the Coyotes has even been arrested for alleged domestic violence against his partner. With that in mind, I'm overjoyed that the three ballot initiatives failed, and I urge this committee to uphold the voters' will that they spoke through that ballot initiative process. And with that, I'll yield back my time. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. The next speaker I have is Asa Henry. Is Asa virtual?
Yes.
All right, state your name and place of residence, you have three minutes.
Good evening, Council. My name is Asa Henry, as previously mentioned. I am hailing from Phoenix, Arizona, but I just wanted to add my name to the voice of those who voted no on propositions 301, 302, and 303, and to implore the council this evening to continue to uphold the voice of the voters that we heard last month, and I'll yield back my time now. Thank you.
Thank you so much. The next speaker I have is Jim Freedom. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence, you have three minutes.
Hello, Jim Freedom, resident of Earth. Before I get started with my main topic opinion, I have a really quick rhetorical question. If I was up here doing something you believe would warrant locking me in a cage, i.e. cussing, stuff like that, wouldn't it be smart to have audio and video evidence of it instead of muting me? Furthermore, wouldn't it kind of be like deleting, destroying evidence of a crime if you're going to call it a crime, you know? But again, rhetorical, I'm sorry. The intelligent thing to do, in my opinion, would be to issue a simple statement to the audience that the public comments section of the meeting might possibly contain cussing from frustrated residents, but apparently that's too much to ask in the land of the free. free. In the last meeting, I said to dig within yourselves and then I always said, "Not you guys," you know, kind of sarcastically. I shouldn't have said that. Even though you are the ones helping violate my freedoms, I still am fighting for your freedoms also, whether you realize it or not. I don't want you punished or hurt like many, many people might. I reject violence. I know I could never match the level of violence you guys are prepared to use against me. I would be satisfied for you to realize and comprehend that your business-as-usual politics are in fact causing more harm than good. For example, you won't let me record public court proceedings because it's an embarrassment to freedom and does not resemble justice in any way. It's a plea bargain assembly line, is what it is. The maximum sentence for each law is so ridiculously high that people are terrified to defend themselves and they're successfully bullied into plea bargains. It's pathetic, in my opinion. There's two types of people that say we have a justice system, the ignorant or the deceitful. We have a punishment-for-profit system. People are dragged, sometimes literally, through the system for victimless crimes as a means to generate revenue. I hope you've at least heard the term victimless crimes before because it's not just something that libertarians and hippies say. There's actual logic and ethics involved. Every time a government enforces a law without a victim, the person getting arrested or ticketed is the victim. If there is no victim, there is no crime. If there is a victim, the prescription for justice is simple: make the victim whole. If someone physically harms someone else, steals or damages property, they should not be forced to pay money to a court. They should pay money to their victim. It's a pretty simple concept. I could spend the next 10 meetings coming back and giving examples of all the things government does wrong and I do plan on being here relentlessly leaning on you verbally in that way, but the very next meeting we're going to have on the 15th, I'm going to give you my idea of a simple solution to government corruption. I'm going to go the other way and offer solutions. We can call it, "What Would Jim Freedom Do If He Was Mayor?"
The next speaker I have is Roberta Neil Miller. Please come forward. State your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Good evening, members of council, mayor. I live here in Tempe. I lived here for 30 years. I'm a member of Tempe First, as you know. The voters have resoundingly rejected your billionaire sports team development agreement and some of you, Councilman Kitty, have called for us to come together, sing kumbaya and end the divisiveness. But that's not going to happen because you caused the divisiveness, you, this council. And we have questions and we need to have them addressed by you. So I have a series of questions for you tonight and I'm asking that you answer them. Why did you ignore the recent financial history of the Coyotes with the city of Glendale and ignore the warnings of your city of Glendale counterparts on the city council and mayor's office warning you not to get in bed with this organization? Why did you accept an economic impact study funded entirely by the Coyotes? Why didn't you commission your own independent economic impact study, such as the one that was done by the Grand Canyon Institute? Why did you become partisan actors on behalf of the Coyotes and the billionaire sports team owner Alex Morello? Why didn't you simply remain neutral instead of amplifying the Coyotes' claims and endorsing them on your social media platforms, as well as allowing your picture, Mayor Woods, to be used more than once on a mailer that was sent out by the Coyotes? Why did you not correct the misinformation that the "yes" campaign repeatedly made about the site being a toxic landfill and that the project was completely privately financed when in fact it was being seeded by our tax abatement, our tax dollars? Why did some of you actually amplify some of those false claims yourselves? Why did you allow a developer attorney, Hugh Hallman, to represent the city of Tempe in negotiating a development agreement between Alex Morello and the city of Tempe? Why did you say and do nothing when the Coyotes and/or their supporters either defaced or stole the "no" campaign signs, something none of us have ever seen to that extent in this city? We'd like to have some answers to those questions. We call upon you to answer them and also to apologize for the completely unnecessary, divisive, expensive campaign that you put us through in this city. And we're waiting. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker I have is Philip Gates. Please come forward. State your name and place of residence. You have three minutes. That is the last card I have, actually, but I'll do an open call afterwards.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I first just have a statement to make. Well, first, I'm the president for the Riverside Neighborhood Association and that is right where this project would have been. The Coyotes project would have been right next door to that. And I wanted to address the council in a format. As you all know, the last public election regarding the entertainment Coyotes project was monumental. It was a historical vote and the people who live here have spoken overwhelmingly in disapproval. I'm glad that the city council, the city and the Coyotes, Tempe First, decided to start a petition process allowing the voters to decide. It was extremely divisive election. Our city council had been in talks with the Coyotes for years. The city wrote the RFP specifically so that only an arena could be built and had never included neighborhood leadership or the community for input with one of the last most special parcels in the city totaling 46 acres. One of my main concerns is city officials openly campaigned for Coyotes project. It leaves me questioning how city assistance, city social media pages were utilized for their endeavor and why officials didn't take a backseat and allow the Marilla Group to run their own campaign. Our mayor Cory Woods, Vice Mayor Jennifer Adams, Randy Kating, and Joel Navarro were the most outspoken with this campaign. Joel Navarro went to the extreme of speaking in a televised debate with regards to this project. Jennifer Adams repeatedly referred to the site as a toxic landfill without proper EPA records, to call it that. There are a lot of questions to be asked. Voters are upset, elected officials, the city council is out of touch with its residents and I certainly speak as a community leader to that effect. The Coyotes didn't run their campaign in good sportsmanship.
I can give you another 30 seconds.
Thank you. The Tempe First campaign and third of our signs were taken down, vandalized. Randy Kating openly criticized people for Tempe First campaign about washable chalk in a parking lot, but never asked the Coyotes to engage their fans to stop vandalizing their site. The mayor, city council, you were listening to the community and the people voted for you. Why were you so outspoken with particular development and the voters didn't want it? The good news is that hopefully the city council has listened to the voters. We need real change.
That's timely.
And time is now to make that change. You have that in your hands and I hope you can make that change. Listen to us, please. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gates. Appreciate it. Okay, the next card that just came in is from Mario Martinez. Please come forward. State your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
My name is Mario Martinez. I live in Tempe. Tonight, the council will vote on Resolution 7C1 pertaining to the Coyote Arena election. Although I supported the vote no effort, there is nothing in this complete debacle to celebrate. When Tempe approved the legal agreement with the Coyotes, the Coyote owners were Alex Morello and Andrew Barroway. Morello and Barroway, quite frankly, they were goons. Their record proved this. They were supported by the professional collaborators such as Cory Woods, Hugh Hallman, and Neil Giuliano. The Coyote owners did not deserve a special election, which cost the Tempe taxpayers over $287,000, which was also the most expensive city election in history. The Coyote owners could have waited for the next regularly scheduled election. During the Coyote proposal process, the council should have known that the Coyote owners were losers. In 2017, the Federal National Labor Relations Board, under Case 28CA201602, determined that the Coyotes, under Andrew Barroway, committed federal labor law violations which are illegal. Led by Cory Woods, Tempe allowed Hugh Hallman, who was a registered attorney lobbyist in Tempe, to write a legal agreement with Morello and Barroway. When the voters decidedly rejected this agreement, Hallman proved his legal ineptitude at taxpayer expense. During the election, the Coyote owners filed legal action about campaign signs which used the phrase "no handout for corrupt billionaires." Eight days later, Andrew Barroway got arrested in Colorado for the felony strangulation of a woman. During the election, the criminal goons who supported the vote yes side used organized criminal activity to vandalize the vote no campaign signs. While the vote yes side denied being corrupt, their illegal actions spoke for themselves. Cory stated that the Coyote Arena was the best sports arena deal in Arizona history. Neil Giuliano, who gets paid over $470K per year for being a special interest representative, agreed with Cory. Well, there are collaborators born every day. On May 16th, both voters took the inspirational stand against the goons. Tempe working families won by 57% of the vote. However, it was not worth over $287,000 of Tempe taxpayer dollars. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think, Madam Clerk, this counts as a comment card that you just handed me as well?
Yes, you already have the card from Gail Graves. I was mistaken. I thought she wanted to speak at the Rio Salado CFD meeting.
Oh, okay, okay.
But it's for this meeting.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you, Ms. Graves. Please come forward. State your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
I'm Gail Graves. I have lived in Tempe 40 years. I was born in Phoenix. My dad was always politically active, so a lot of my daddy-daughter events were going to campaign headquarters canvassing the neighborhoods. And as we did this, my dad repeated every time, "Do not be intimidated by these people. They work for you and you're going to have to keep reminding them that they work for you." I'm up here because of the Coyotes' vote. I have these two pamphlets from 1997. I worked at the post office. They were printed. I delivered hundreds of these to every citizen, every household in Tempe. Some of the language on the pamphlets is, "This meandering urban park will create recreational opportunities as well as flood control. Wildlife habitats and riparian areas are an essential component. Large-scale open spaces will create a balance between buildings and landscaped areas." Cory, I saw you on a PBS show, Trail Mixt, and you met the reporter at Rio Salado and you bragged about Tempe Beach Park and about A-Mountain. To give you a little history on that, in 1992, developers came to the city council and asked to build Red River Opry in the middle of Tempe Beach Park. There was very little development. That was the only green area, the only park. The citizens came together. We fought it and we stopped that project. In 2000, another set of developers came to the council, tried to build on A-Mountain, destroyed the last little bit of Sonoran Desert in our city, removed access to all the hiking trails, and we stopped that. And now the third time that we've spoken clearly and strongly about how we feel about that area. Your job is to protect us from these bully developers that keep coming in and trying to steal our natural areas that contribute to our quality of life. I'm asking you to survey the residents. It's obvious you guys have lost touch with the people who put you in office and even more frightening is that you haven't, but you knew what we wanted and you still went ahead and pushed for this stadium. I'm already hearing grumblings about the cost of cleaning up the area. All of you guys voted to contribute $200-plus million for, to fill that area with a concrete...
I can give you another 30 seconds.
...with concrete. So it makes sense to spend a few million dollars to clean it up and do what you promised so many years ago that there's no support for a big project there. We're getting kind of tired of fighting you guys all the time and I'm asking that you really do an honest survey and listen to us and do what we worked together on creating something that we all want. Remember, you guys work for us. We put you in office. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Graves. Appreciate it. That is the last card that I have. I'm just going to look to the audience here. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to address the council? If so, please get my attention. All right. Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close that portion of the meeting, which takes me to item number seven, which is the consent agenda. All items listed on the consent agenda will be considered as a group and will be enacted with one motion by the city council unless an item is removed for separate consideration. Members of the public may remove public hearing items for separate consideration. Public hearing items are designated as public hearing item at the beginning of the item title. Councilmembers may remove any item for separate consideration or to declare a conflict of interest. If a councilmember would like to declare a conflict at this time, the city clerk will provide the councilmember with a disclosure form. If you wish to speak on a public hearing item, please fill out a speaker card and submit your completed card to the city clerk prior to the agenda item coming forward for council discussion. I will call your name when it is your turn for public comment. The consent agenda this evening is listed as miscellaneous items 7A1 through 7A8, awards of bids and contracts 7B1 through 7B11, and resolutions items 7C1 through 7C6. Any item designated as public hearing item can be removed by a member of the public for separate consideration. If anyone would like to have a public hearing item removed, please get my attention now. All right, seeing none, Madam Clerk, were there any comments received from the public wishing to address the council on a consent agenda public hearing item?
No additional cards. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Council, are there any other agenda items that you'd like to see removed from the consent agenda for a separate consideration? All right. I was going to remove one. No, no, it's okay. No, it's okay. It's fine. Let's see, item 7C1. Okay, so then, if there's none others, then I'm looking for approval of the consent agenda, miscellaneous items 7A1 through 7A8, awards of bids and contracts 7B1 through 7B11, and resolutions items 7C2 through 7C6 with item 7C1 removed for separate consideration. It's removed by Councilmember Kating and seconded by Councilmember Navarro. Please vote. And that item passes seven to zero. That brings us to item 7C1, which is to adopt a resolution declaring the canvas of results for the May 16th, 2023, city of Tempe's special election. Just wanted to make a quick comment about that. Obviously, you know, this item was, well, there was a lot of conversation about this earlier, so the items did not pass. And so the reality is, the city council always respects the will of our voters and what we're going to do at this point is simply go back and have some conversations about what could actually happen on that 46 acres. It's clearly a very valuable piece of land on Rio Salado. I don't know what might happen at this point. I don't have any concept in my head or any ideas to what might happen on that site, but what I'm looking forward to doing, and I'm sure the entire council's looking forward to doing, is having conversations with members of the community about what kind of project we think might actually work really well on that site that might help to bring the community back to... that might help to bring the community back together. The reality is, you know, we thought this was important to put out for a public vote. The voters have spoken, though, and obviously myself with the council completely accept the results of the election. And tonight, I will be voting to approve the canvas of the results of the May 16th election. So with that said, I'll look for a motion. Moved by Councilmember Navarro. Do I have a second? Seconded by Vice Mayor Adams. Please vote.
Aye.
And that item also passes unanimously, seven to zero. All right. Next up is item number eight, which is the Nonconsent Agenda. All items listed on the Nonconsent Agenda will be considered separately. Agenda items scheduled for introduction and first public hearing will be heard but will not be voted upon at this meeting. Agenda items scheduled for second public hearing and final adoption will be voted upon tonight. Council members who may have a conflict of interest may abstain from voting on a matter, and the city clerk will provide the council members with the disclosure form at this time. First up, item 8A1, "Hold a public hearing to adopt a resolution levying the fiscal year 2023-2024 annual assessment for the City of Tempe Downtown Tempe and Head Services Improvement District, ruling on objections, making corrections, approving a new district map, and approving modified assessments." This is a public hearing item. Is everyone here wishing to address the council on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, any comments and discussion? All right, I'll look for a motion on item 8A1. Moved by Councilmember Chin, seconded by Councilmember Keating. Please vote.
Aye.
And that item passes seven to zero. Next item is 8A2, "Approve a two-year contract renewal with Paymentis," a great name, "corporation for a vendor-hosted mobile web payment processing service." Any comments and discussion? Removed by Councilmember Keating. Do I have a second? Seconded by Vice Mayor Adams. Please vote.
Aye.
And that item passes seven to zero. The next item under the section is 8A3, which is to approve the utilization of two-year City of Tucson contracts with mobile concepts technology for mobile computing solutions, including ruggedized laptops, tablets, accessories, and related technology projects and services, products and services for the fire, medical, rescue, and police departments and other city departments on an as-needed basis. Counsel, any comments and discussion? Moved by Councilmember Navarro and seconded by Councilmember Keating. Please vote. Councilmember Hodge?
Aye.
Great, and that item passes seven to zero. The next item under the section is 8A4, which is to approve a one-year contract renewal with Allied Universal Security Incorporated to provide security officer services for various city departments. Counsel, any comments and discussion?
Still move.
Moved by Councilmember Hodge. Do I have a second? Seconded by Councilmember Keating. Please vote.
Aye.
And that item passes seven to zero. The last item under the section is 8A5, which is to award a construction manager at risk contract to Caliente Construction Incorporated for the Tempe Fire Medical Rescue Station Number Two, GMP Two Project, located at 3025 South Hardy Drive. Any comments and discussion? Moved by Councilmember Keating. Seconded by Vice Mayor Adams. Please vote.
Aye.
And that item passes seven to zero. The next section on the Nonconsent Agenda is ordinances and items for introduction and first hearing. These items will be read and introduced tonight, but no votes will be taken. The second hearing and vote for these items is scheduled for June 15th, 2023. The only item under the section is 8B1, which is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance for a zoning map amendment from R16 Single Family Residential Zoning District to R16 with a historic overlay designation for McCamey Riggs House located at 135 East Buena Way. The applicant is Mark Vincent. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the city council? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, any comments and discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I believe we have a presentation by the applicant.
Oh, okay, sure. Is there a presentation? Oh, it's online. Okay, great. I was like, I am not seeing anyone, so I'm... Where are you hiding? And is that Mr. Vincent?
Yes, hello.
Hey, Mark, how are you?
Doing great, thank you. Thank you for this opportunity to come before you this evening. My name is Mark Vincent. I'm an architect with expertise in historic preservation, which is why I've been asked to represent the property owner at 135 East Buena Way in her quest to obtain historic preservation designation for her property. Can you still hear me?
Yes. Yes, we can.
Okay. So, again, the request is for historic preservation designation with corresponding overlay, H overlay zoning, and the necessary amendment of the Tempe zoning map. Having said that, I would like to just give a brief presentation about the property. It's located in the University Estates subdivision, basically north and east of Mill and Broadway. And you see the floor plan of the house in question. And what you see is the original house that faces the street. There are some later additions in the back of the house, but I would point out that the front of the house remains unchanged with the exception of some very minor removable modifications in the front. If...I don't know that I'm able to control the presentation from here. Oh, yes, I am, maybe. Okay, that's a good slide right there. So we can see the subject property. There's a small red dot on the house that's just a little bit below and to the right of the center of the lower photograph. So the upper photograph was taken of University Estates in 1949. And as you can see, it was Fields owned by the Epley family, is my understanding. And two years later, there are already a dozen houses that have been completed or essentially completed, and a dozen more under construction. And by about 1953, the entire neighborhood was probably 95% built out. But the house that we're looking at tonight was one of the first four. I believe it was the fourth house built. The house by the Epley family was the first house built in the neighborhood just to the left of the subject property. So we can go to the next slide. And here we see the original subdivision plat of the neighborhood. And I'll just stop right here for a second and just talk about the significance of this era. I mean, this is the post-World War II era in Tempe. And when we think of historic properties in Tempe, we usually first think of properties like Hayden House or the Elias Rodriguez House, both constructed of Adobe, or the Peterson House, all built in the late 1900s, or, excuse me, late 1800s or early 1900s. And, you know, rightly so, we think of those as important Tempe properties. But it was this post-war period in Tempe that saw the greatest expansion of Tempe, the greatest amount of construction during any one period in Tempe's history. And therefore, noteworthy examples from that period do become important in Tempe's history. And so that's what we have before us tonight. I'll go to the next slide. And there we just see an aerial view of the house. And the next slide after that gives us the image of the house from the street. What you see, you do see a two-story addition to the house peeking out from the back that was done around 1990 by the owner to accommodate her mother moving in. But the actual form of the 1950 house is entirely intact, even down to the carport, which is quite unusual. Usually, those have been filled in by now. And you see this type of home throughout that entire neighborhood. But the thing is that most of the other homes in the neighborhood have been altered, you know, along this primary facade, and no longer have what we would call historic integrity, whereas this home does, even given the addition in the back. So just from that historic perspective, it's an important property in the city relating to that era. The other thing that makes this very important, and I might mention that this is only... This is owned by the second owner of the home, which is highly unusual for a home constructed in Tempe in 1950 to have only had two owners, which is another reason why it retains its original characteristics. But the other significant thing about this is that it was the home that was actually built for Harvey and Marge McKinney. And you may have heard the name McKinney associated with Tempe. We have the McKinney Middle School, which is now the...I'm not sure of the exact name of it at this point, but it has a slightly different function these days. We have a McKinney Street. So the McKinneys, and in particular Harvey McKinney, have been honored in Tempe's history. He's been recognized as probably the most significant educator in Tempe history. And this was their home that they had built. Our Lloyd Williams, a local designer and builder, built the home, along with his own home over near Tempe High School. So we have a great example of that time period, and we have a property that's associated with a person who is very significant in Tempe's history. So that is why we're making the case that this is worthy of historic designation. The Historic Preservation Commission agreed, as well as the Development Review Commission. So I ask you to join with them in designating this as a Tempe historic property. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Mr. Vincent. Really appreciate it. Counsel, any comments and discussion? All right. I don't have any either. Just want to reiterate then that the second and final public hearing on this item is scheduled for June 15th, 2023. The next section on the Nonconsent Agenda is ordinances and items for second hearing and final adoption. There are no items this evening, so I will go ahead and move on to the next section, which is item number nine, "Current Events, Council Announcements, and Future Agenda Items." I'm going to call upon council members for their comments and/or requests to add an agenda item to a future council meeting. And I will start this evening with Councilmember Hodge.
Hi. I'm looking at the screen right...I gotta see the screen. There we go. We have January...this Saturday, June 3rd, we have Breakfast with Berdeta and Joel. It's going to be a phenomenal one. It's about safety, starting with water safety. It's starting with just safety fireworks, everything that... With our kids being out of school and for the summer, it's very important. It's going to be at the fire station. We have our Councilmember Joel, who is a fireman, going to be there, and many other guests. So please come out and bring your children out there today. That's going to be on January 3rd...I mean, January, excuse me, June 3rd at 10:00 to 11:30 a.m. Also, we have World Elderly Abuse Awareness Day. In Arizona, it's between 4,000 to 6,000 to 6,900 seniors who experience that. And just to have that day to be out there and awards, please... It's at Friendship Village. So it is on January 10th from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., and that's the second annual... This is the second annual World Abuse Awareness Day. And Juneteenth is coming...excuse me, June 17, 2023. It is at the Tempe Historical Museum. It is one of my favorite holidays. We have it from 11:00 to 3:00 p.m., and then we also can come downtown because we have a continuation with Juneteenth at that afternoon. So, and that's due Tempe tour. So come out and enjoy Juneteenth on January 17, 2023. Oh, well, actually, I just said it. I just said it. Celebrated on the Freedom...the next one, that is it. That's the one from 12:00 to 5:00 at the Arizona Historical Museum. Another celebration for Juneteenth on College Avenue. So that's from 12:00 to 5:00. Excuse me, from 12:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. And I think that's the end of my awards. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Hodge. Really appreciate it. Next up, I'm going to go to Councilmember Keating.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to wish everybody Happy Pride Month and looking forward to celebrating this Saturday. Downtown Tempe, 7 to 10. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Keating. Next up, Councilmember Navarro.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't think I have anything on the visual screen, but I just want to say at the...I'm sorry. Hispanic elected officials conference I was at over the week, great conference, just in terms of affordable housing, making sure that we have great representation within our country on a growing population with the Hispanic community, but also the census and how important it is to get accurate counts within the census. And I kind of urge our council and also the people out there, this is actually the time of the year we need to urge Congress to not only still continue with the programs, but not take away programs from the census. This is about the time of year where we do budget cuts, where those programs get wired or kind of slaughtered down, so to speak. And then, when they are down to a lower level, the representation or the intensity of trying to accurately count people within our communities somehow gets a little out of range. We were undercounted. We should have picked up two congressional seats this last go-around. We did not, and we were not accurately counted on that, excuse me. But also, we have to make sure that the Hispanic community is accurately counted. We have to get the message out for also immigrants that are coming in. Even though right now it's immigrants that are coming in, we still have to count them for our representation. So it's very important that we know this, understand this, and then if we ever do, we need to actually, as a council and as a community, get out there and support our Congress members, actually get into their ears and our senators to make sure that we do not cut fundings for the census. It's very important for us going down the road. Money to our community.
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilmember Navarro. Next up, Vice Mayor Adams.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to have a couple announcements this evening. One is this Saturday night from June 3rd, from 7:00 to 10:00 at Center Point Plaza. We will have the Tempe For a Pride Party Silent Disco. So please bring your dance and shoes and get ready for a free fun event. Also, we have Join Jennifer at Gamage, June 7th, and that will be from 5:30 to 6:30 p.m. The Frank Lloyd Wright-designed Grady Gamage Memorial Auditorium has long been a tourist attraction for our city, and the focus of this event will be tourism. We'll hear remarks from Michael Martin, who is the Tempe Tourism CEO, and myself, as well as get a private tour of Gamage from Director of Public Relations, Cara Amoroso. Parking will be free, so please enter through Gamage via the box office entrance. If you would like to attend the event, please contact my amazing staff member, Brooke St. George, and her phone number is 480-350-8893 as soon as possible, because we are filling up. Can't wait to see you all there. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Vice Mayor Adams. Next up, Councilmember Chin.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a reminder for people, as summer begins...it just began. And as temperatures creep up on those excessive heat warning days, if you or you know someone that could use a respite, we have multiple cooling centers throughout the community. They are free. Water will be available. And if you have a dog, you can bring your dog as well.
Thank you, Councilmember Chin. Next up, Councilmember Garland.
Thank you, Mayor. So Kazo Dance Center is presenting their students alongside professional dancers on a journey through dreams and nightmares. Cheer on the students as they tap, flap, fly, tumble, all of those fun things. And it will be happening at the Tempe Center for the Arts on June 3rd. Lots of June 3rd events going on here. And the admission is $18 for adults or for youth, and then kids under 12 will be $13. So it'd be great if you guys wanted to attend and cheer on some kids dancing. Thank you. So, you know, just thinking about the award that Riley Flippo received earlier. My friend Dave Munsey, for years, when I worked with him at Channel 10, he would always end his newscast with "Watch your kids around water." And I have heard him say before that there is no season for drowning. So he would say, "Watch your kids around water" all year round, and that's how he signed off his newscast. So I just want to just put this out there, and I'm going to probably start cheering on this slide every single time I have an opportunity, because I really think it's really important that we are paying attention to the water safety in our community that we are paying attention to our, the water safety in our community and, you know, for suggesting people learn about CPR training and just watching your kids out there. So if you have any questions, talk about pools, pools opening, pool safety, go to tempe.gov/pools and watch your kids around water. The Family Advocacy Center, this center is pretty amazing. We just went and got a tour of what the, the room looks like or what the building looks like, and I just want to say the Family Advocacy Center is a partnership between Tempe Police Department, ASU Police Department, and Community Health Services and Human Services Department. And the, the services that they provide are individual advocacy, virtual court, trauma healing program, individual counseling, and future services will be sexual assault, nurse exams, and basic medical services. This is a partnership between the City of Tempe and Arizona State University to serve the entire community, students, residents, visitors, and anyone who is in need. The city has invested nearly $800,000 to lease and upgrade the space that this is in, and we will continue to invest $300,000 each year to serve our community, and ASU is also contributing $45,000 annually as part of a five-year agreement. And this, again, this is all to care for those who really, really need help in our community. So call the Care and Hope Line for connection to an advocate at the Family Advocacy Center to make appointments, or you just need to talk to somebody and they can get you in the right areas. The number is 480-350-8004. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, Councilmember Garland. That brings it to me, and actually, everyone's already said everything I was going to say. So I, I will second everyone else's comments this evening. With that said, I'll move on to item number 10, our second version of public appearances. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to address the council? Would if so, please come forward and state your name and city of residence for the record. All right, seeing none, that means our next regular city council meeting is scheduled for June 15th, 2023. I'm going to adjourn this meeting to council. We have two more special meetings down here, so we'll take about a minute to turn over everything, and then we've got an executive session to finish upstairs. But for now, the regular council meeting is adjourned. Thank you so much, everyone, for watching and for attending in person.